I call to order this February 12th meeting of the North Allegheny School Board. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I would like to check in and see, Dr. Gibbs, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Excellent, we can hear you too. And Ms. Wideman, can you hear us? Or maybe Ms. Wideman is not online tonight. I thought she was planning to be. She's, okay. I am confident, even though Ms. Wideman is a godsend, that we will be able to run this meeting whether we can hear her or not. Although I will miss her keeping me in line when I make a mistake. Okay, so now we will move on to our calendar review. We have our meeting tonight where we have three presentations, our human resources mid-year update, our school counseling review presentation, and our speech and language review presentation. Next, or in two weeks, we will have our regular meeting on the 26th, and we will vote on items. We have no presentation scheduled for that evening. And now I will turn it over to Dr. Hyland for these reports.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. Since we have three, I'm going to get right to it. The first one is our mid-year human resources update, and I will turn the mic over to our very capable Ms. Tracy.
All right, good evening. Thank you so much. I am here to present a brief update, the mid-year update. The board knows we present a more comprehensive update in September of each school year. Those numbers are based on day three statistics. So it's the staff we have on day three, the student numbers we have on day three of school. The mid-year update is just, fast forward, it's the first day of the second semester, which this year was January 20th. So hiring, as the board is well aware and those in the audience, hiring talented staff fulfills all five of our strategic goals. We really can't run this district without being able to hire and retain talented staff. So the mid-year update numbers, as the board may be aware, but those in the public might not. Last year, we switched to reporting in, for the administrators, only reporting positions, whether they were filled or unfilled. Because I think it provides a more accurate representation of the administrative staff of the district. That number is the only one on here. That is not the point in time figure for the, you know, that would be how many positions we have, whether they're filled or not, on the first day of the second semester. The, we currently have two administrative positions open, and one will advertise a little later in the, spoiler alert, a little later in the program here. But we have positions for an assistant principal at Marshall Elementary School we are recruiting for actively right now. So our professionals, our paraprofessionals, confidential employees, custodial maintenance employees, bus drivers, garage mechanics, and school police officers are all current staff, and that's based on FTEs, the full-time equivalent, which is why you see those decimal numbers. The professionals, we have 707.3. That's because we do have some part-time staff. So adding up all those full-time equivalents are the numbers you get there. So it's just a snapshot of the staff comparison between that third day of school, the start of the 2024 school year, compared to now mid-year, and it rolls back two years prior. So does the board have any questions on this slide now, or want to wait till the end, or no questions is fine too?
Anyone?
Okay. The next slide, the reason I pointed out that professional number is because the next slide shows the ratio of professional staff to students. And with comparator districts that PDE has, you know, given us that are comparators for years now. So the board is very familiar with this slide and this statistic, how we stack up against similar districts throughout the state. We're very favorably compared with about a 1 to 12 ratio. And professional staff is all teachers, that includes our, as well as school nurses, our counselors, I know many are here tonight, other school resource personnel, psychologists. I'm sure I'm missing people because I'm here on the spot, but it's all professional staff. It's not just classroom teachers, it's all the wraparound services, SAP coordinators, et cetera. So that's where we are. I can't tell you that that's how all schools report that number, but that's how we report it. The next is just, you know, taking a look at the education of our staff, both administrators and professionals. We had a little bit of an uptick since last year in the administrative ranks, and the number stays steady for professionals. As I said, we have some current employment opportunities at the district. One we are recruiting for right now in administrative category is the assistant principal for Marshall Elementary Schools. It's one of our larger elementary schools in the northern end of the district. We have a position open for a long-term substitute ESL teacher. That's the English as second language teacher to work with our ELD program. Special education assistants, we have full-time positions available. We have full-time positions available for a couple custodians, a mechanic still, a mechanic assistant, I believe, and we're always hiring bus drivers at our district. And for those who want a more flexible schedule, who would like to contribute to the district but don't want to do it every single day, we always have substitute positions. We're always accepting substitutes, day-to-day substitutes, paraprofessional, guest substitutes. Those guest substitutes, there's a class starting soon for training. Those are individuals who have a four-year degree, who could step in the shoes on a limited basis for our teaching professionals in classrooms after they complete a program, an orientation that's conducted through the AIU. So we invite anyone with talent and passion to join our tiger team. In summary, our staffing remains fluid, as it always is. We're always recruiting at the district. So we encourage everyone to look at the careers page on the NA School District website, and you'll find all our open opportunities. We prepare for next year staffing already. I know it's only February 12th, but we're already thinking about next year's staff. I would let those in the community who are listening as well know that we will have a good number of positions. We have, as we noted later in Ms. Britton Dozier's report, we are having the board vote this month on eight, no, 19 professional retirees. So we're going to have some vacancies on our teaching staff, and we'd sure love to fill those with talented individuals. Do the best we can. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Does anyone have any comments or questions on this report? Okay, seeing none, we can move on to the next one.
Okay, the next presentation tonight is our school counseling program review. And at this time, I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank all of our counselors for the work they do. You can still get up, that's okay, Brian. Take a victory lap. I'd just like to thank them. The strength of our counseling department is second to none. The fact, look at the representation that we have of our counselors giving up their time to be here tonight. So I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank you for the hard work that you do on a daily basis. And I'd also like to thank you for the presentation that you're going to put forward tonight. But just all know, we recognize the hard work that you do with our students, and it is very much appreciated. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to the department leader, and that's Mr. Kiggins.
Well, thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here tonight and to be able to present to you. We're very excited to put forth our 113 slide present, just kidding. Dr. DeLuca gave me some guidelines, so don't worry, we will be sticking with it. So anything less than 113 is going to feel great right now. But we are excited to be here. If you notice, our title is saying program review. So it is a little different than usual. We worked with Dr. DeLuca and Mr. Smith on developing some curriculum ideas. So we do dabble in curriculum, and we also have a K-12 program that we work through. We follow the American School Counseling Association's three domains of career, personal, social, and also academic. We make every effort we can to make sure that all of our students are prepared in these three areas. We did take our time throughout our review to focus in on our strategic plan and also the performance indicators. We will highlight those throughout our presentation and how they support our recommendations. My name is once again is Brian Kiggins. I am the School Counseling Department Chair, and I'm also a counselor at NAI. This is Jen Rosado. She's a school counselor at the senior high school. And this is Katie Luysanouski, and she's a school counselor at McKnight. We do have some members of our team here tonight, and that we did work for the last four or five months trying to put this review together for you. The structure of our presentation is the following. We're going to review quickly the assessments that we put forth, and some of the considerations that we took under advisement. We have recommendations that we are going to share with you, a few of them tonight. We're going to have a slide on the justification in support of a recommendation, the performance indicators that we are supporting, and then our goal or action plans on additional slide. We'll conclude with a few comments and any questions that you might have. So our first initial step was to do our internal and external analysis. The internal analysis was with the department, just really trying to understand what are our strengths and weaknesses? What are we seeing? What do we need to make some changes doing? And we compiled that information. We took that additional approach with our advisory council. A school counseling advisory council is a state-recognized advisory council. We have 50 to 60 members that meet twice a year to be able to talk about our concerns, what we are doing, share out as much as we possibly can. So we put them to the test too, and just asked them to give us the same strengths, weaknesses, what is it that they're seeing, what do our students need at this point? And then we also utilized the data from the annual student and parent survey to gain additional perspectives on our department and awareness on mental health. So we did update our philosophy in 2017. Words Were the Thing, and we had a good three and a half-page philosophy that we shared on the district website. But we have summarized it, and we have made it more concise. We took strong consideration in our word choices. We wanted to really make sure that it showed our passion as a department, but also emphasized the needs of our students and our families.
Good evening. So I'm going to share our first recommendation for the night, which is supporting students' emotional well-being. This falls under our social-emotional part of our ASK national model, and it's largely based on the increase in mental health needs of our students. With these increased mental health needs, unfortunately, become, comes less services available to our students. Some of our buildings that have Glade Run therapists are operating on a waitlist. Some of our buildings started with a waitlist this year and were quickly on a waitlist a couple of weeks into the school year. And reflecting on that district survey, we also saw that between 25 and 35% of our families don't know how to access those mental health supports that we have available to them. So here's our performance indicators which support our recommendation. And of course, our recommendation is that we increase our family's knowledge of the mental health supports that we have. We're going to do this in a variety of ways, and the first thing we'd like to do is to create a universal resource list for families. We currently have a lot of lists. So we have seven elementary schools full of lists. We have three middle schools of lists. We have two high schools of lists. We would like to consolidate into one list that we can share with our families, that we know that the therapists on the list are practicing, that they have openings. We're not sure yet if we're going to do that internally as a school counseling department, or if we're going to outsource and get some help to create that universal list. In addition to Glade Run, we want to just look for more supports that are in our community. And we're going to continue to share our resources through our school counseling advisory council and through our counselor coffees, because this is a great way to connect with community members and share the resources that we have. And we'll continue working with our social workers. We'll continue our work with our student assistants, coordinators, and teams. We also want to investigate the feasibility for a space in our buildings where students can take a break. I think you'd be surprised to know that we have students in our buildings who daily come for just a break. They may be experiencing panic. They may be having anxiety attacks. They may just need a place to sit and talk. Sometimes they want to talk with us, and sometimes they just need some space. So we want to look at the feasibility for that in all of our buildings. And then lastly, we are looking at the Columbia Suicide Severity Rating Scale. So this is a risk assessment interview the school counselors would use if we have students who come to us with suicidal ideation. In the last six years in K-12, we have had over 600 risk assessments done in our buildings of students experiencing suicidal ideation. Of those 600 assessments, a third of them were moderate to imminent risk. Some of those students needed immediate assistance. So we're looking to find a tool to help us evaluate the need and risk of these students quickly and accurately. We have something that we use now that we created a while ago, but the Columbia is actually the risk assessment that's most widely used in our nation for mental health professionals. So we're hoping to adopt that into our department.
Good evening. I was joking that I'm on the shorter side, and I hope you all can see me. So. All right, our second recommendation focuses on the school counseling career readiness framework and skills. This recommendation aligns with our career domain under the ASK model, and within this recommendation, we are focusing on two things. Our first focus is on researching and implementing an evidence-based career readiness curriculum that develops students' interpersonal skills. Research from our curriculum review indicates the need to focus on the development of interpersonal skills, as well as career exploration as key components to career readiness. These skills would include the ability to communicate, solve problems, think critically, set goals, persevere, and work together in teams. The benefits of having a career readiness curriculum ensures that our students are career-ready by developing the interpersonal skills needed to be prepared for an ever-changing world. In addition, it provides consistency across all buildings to ensure that each student is taught the same thing. And it helps us to ensure that 98% of our students are meeting the career readiness and work standards. The second part of this recommendation is the Career Readiness Index and Career Readiness and Work Standards. There are four Career Readiness and Work Standards that provide guidance to ensure that all students are prepared for life beyond high school. They include career readiness and preparation, career acquisition, career retention and advancement, and entrepreneurship. Students are required to demonstrate evidence that each of these standards have been met. The benchmark grade levels for reporting these standards are fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. At the end of fifth grade, all students should have enough, have at least six pieces of evidence. At the end of eighth grade, an additional six pieces of evidence is needed, including an individualized career plan. And at the end of 11th grade, eight pieces of evidence is needed, two of which that demonstrate the career plan implementation. Currently, at this time, the school counseling department takes on most of this task. These are the performance indicators that support this recommendation. So the goal that we have to meet this recommendation is to reach and maintain 98% completion in each benchmark grade level, and to recommend a career readiness skills curriculum by the end of the 2025-2026 school year. In order to do so, we plan to explore available career readiness curriculums to support interpersonal skills, skill building for students in grades K to 12, to align PDE career education and work standards with skills taught across all department and grade levels, to incorporate the learning management system with career readiness lessons, to ensure that those lessons are more accessible to all students, to collaborate with other district departments to teach and gather evidence regarding career-ready skill development and resources. For example, Jen recently met with the English department regarding the career project that they complete in 11th grade, as well as other potential assignments that we could use towards that evidence. And Brian is also collaborating with IT to help create a code that will pull out the assignments from the grade book, again, for looking for potential evidence that we can use to show that we are meeting these career standards. Lastly, we would like to establish ways to implement professional development to stay current with the career readiness framework.
All right, for the recommendation number three, review of testing coordination. So this is, when I'm talking about testing coordination, I am talking about all testing within the district at this point. So we are talking about PSSAs, Keystone's, SATs, PSATs, APs, pre-ACTs, PSATs, and also gifted testing. So the school counselors are, at all levels, are involved with the distribution and administration of these tests. And we need to explore the impact that this has on our delivery of services to all stakeholders. However, during some of the discussion, Mr. Duramo and Dr. DeLuca and I had some conversations about the review of testing coordination, and AP testing came up as an imminent concern. So I'm going to share a little bit more with you regarding AP at this point. So as a district, our AP coordinator person is going to be resigning. So we need to look at a way to be able to continue this service at some point. As a district, we also have issues with the current technology and the areas that we utilize for our testing administration. The size of the locations are becoming too small in order to accommodate all of our students, and finding sufficient proctors is also a concern. So based on the statistics on the screen, we can see that the supplemental position has grown significantly. Our exams are now well over 2,000 this year. We also have about 84 exams that are going to need individual accommodations in order to be able to accomplish. We currently utilize the barrel center, the pont's room, the NAI lower gym, Nash Counseling Office, all to be able to try to execute all these tests. The college board also estimates that the AP coordinator will need to commit 260 to 280 hours preparing and administering these tests throughout the school year. And that right now is just trying to be built into a school day or outside of the school day. These are the recommendation, the performance indicators that our recommendation supports. So our recommendation is exactly that, review the testing coordination. So we need to review the current process for the testing coordination in the district to support the increase of the district testing, provide accommodation to ensure that the best outcomes for our students. We have to explore a systematic process for district-wide K-12 testing coordination with our district. We need to develop an appropriate compensation and job description for an APSAT/ACT testing coordinator or coordinators. We have already started that conversation with Mr. Duramo. And we hope to develop an action plan for this work by September of 2025.
So I'm going to touch on the fourth and final recommendation that we're going to talk about this evening, which is enhancing partnerships with our stakeholders. So stakeholders are anybody in the community that impacts or has a positive influence on our students. So we're talking about parents, teachers, administrators, college admission representatives, local business owners, and even mental health professionals in our community. We really believe that by enhancing these partnerships, that the school counselors have an integral role in that homeschool connection. Here we have our performance indicators. So in thinking about enhancing partnerships, we were reflecting on the district survey of students and parents. And as school counselors, we looked at the survey, and there were two questions that really stood out to us that are really impactful for our department. The first question simply asked students and parents, are you satisfied with the school counseling services provided to you? The second question that stood out to us had to do with feeling prepared for life after high school. So it asked students and parents, do you either feel prepared for the next grade level, or do you feel prepared for life after high school? And I know as a Nash counselor, I really feel like a big part of my job is to prepare for students for after, life after high school. So back to the numbers, we are looking at about 80 to 83% of students and parents in middle and high school who said they're satisfied with the school counseling department services. So that's not bad. It's pretty good. It's a high, you know, well above average, really great number, but we think we can do better. Looking at the numbers for families who feel prepared, a little better. 85 to 90% of middle school and high school students are feeling prepared for the next grade level or for life after high school, and that's great too. But we don't want to be complacent. We'd like to narrow that gap and really just strive for excellence. And we think we can do that by building and enhancing partnerships. Because if families know what the school counselors can do for them, if they know the services that are available to them in our community, we really think that we can, as our goal, to increase parent and student satisfaction of services, and also increase student readiness for life after high school, most importantly. So things that we want to do. We want to increase, or we want to continue our school counselor advisory meetings. A fun fact about our advisory council is that we've actually been congratulated by the state for an exemplary program. We were invited a few years ago to present at PDE at a state conference in state college. We have multiple school districts in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania who are emulating our school counseling advisory program. So we're really proud of it, but we can make it bigger. Like Brian said, we have 50 to 60 people who are in it. We want to invite more stakeholders. We actually started this year by inviting more people to be part of our council, and we want to continue to do that. We want to implement counselor coffees at all levels. So currently, Nash and NAI have been doing counselor coffees for several years. We have a variety of topics with, that we host families. We've done things like college admission 101. We've done testing. We've done mental health topics. It's just a great way to connect with parents. So we want to continue those, but we want to move them to the middle and elementary schools. And in fact, our elementary and middle school counselors are actually combining for the first time this spring to host their first counselor coffee. We're always looking at the transition process of students moving building to building. So that's five to six, eight to nine, and then 10 to 11, up to Nash. So you want to look at how we move students in these important transitions in their lives. And then finally, for our secondary school students, we want to provide more exploration for them so they can figure out what they want to do with their lives, meaning job fairs, job shadowing, internships, apprenticeships, interview skills, resume writing. We want to continue this with our students. We want to build a list of things that kids can go to, to look for these opportunities. And finally, we have a really great post-secondary fair at Nash that we've been doing for the last couple of years. Each year, we've had 100 or more colleges and military branches and trade schools that have come in and met with all of our sophomores and juniors. And we really want to continue to build that to enhance partnerships with our community.
That concludes our presentation. Thank you for giving us the time to share our curriculum program review. We're open to any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you so much. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Ms. Faber?
Thank you all so much for your presentation. It was very enlightening and all good to hear. There was a couple things that I, that stood out to me, one of which was the statistic of 36% of high school parents and 27% of students are not aware of the mental health supports in the district. And one of your solutions that you brought up, that you were going to work towards, was a universal resource page, and I think that's an excellent idea. I also think that honesty and vulnerability from the students comes from trust more than knowledge. So my question is, is there a way for students to better know and trust their counselors? Because there are a lot of students I know in limited counselors, so I want to send that to you.
Okay, great question. Thank you for, so we do pride ourselves on trying to get our, know our students as best as we can. We do orientations at the beginning of the year. We try to introduce ourselves, get in the classroom. We do run a variety of sport groups. At the elementary level, they're doing lunch bunches. They're partnering with their teachers. And middle school level, they are in the classroom doing career lessons. So I think them seeing us and being active and participating in the environment outside of our office will help. The other thing is too, is that them understanding what services we provide. I think the kids being a part of our stakeholder groups, being a part of our advisory council and getting that information out, will also. We also have confidentiality, and there's things, ways to build trust with that. And we also tell our students a lot of time too, you have to take a risk. You have to want to, to give us a shot. Come down and talk to us just to get to know us, and, and set an appointment before something comes up or a crisis comes up. But it is, it is the hardest thing that we have to do. Our numbers are, are large and, you know, but I think as a department, we really do our best to try to get out there and get in the classroom. But if your peers have any feedback for us, I mean, we would value that significantly too.
Thank you, Ms. Faber. Anything else? Anyone? Mr. Wender?
Thank you. So I'm going to try not to lead the witness, but one of the statistics you mentioned was certainly interesting or enlightening, kind of scary, was that you had like 600, you know, interventions to. interventions, 200 of which were more serious. But obviously, you know, I think it's obviously general knowledge that there's been a significant increase in the amount of mental health issues and needs for students. Have you been able to like track or correlate or like try to hone in on what is it or what are several things that could be creating this increased demand? Is it, is it the influx of like bombardment of social media all the time? I mean, is that something that you hear? And that's the part where I'm not trying to totally lead the witness, but like, you know, it's something that I, I'm just interested to see what your perception is on that.
Research does show that, that without a doubt, that social media plays a significant part. Our kids have access to lots of things, younger and younger, as they go through. So I think that exposure does not help our situation. COVID has also sent a tailspin. I hate, you know, I know that's a word we try to avoid using, but the recovery of that has been very difficult. And the, the ability to, to dig in and have grit and so forth is, is a struggle. And so our kids are seeing so much more anxiety. I'd say anxiety is, is huge, and I think it just ties back to coping, knowing where they can go and have an outlet is also a, a part of the concern. And so, I mean, would you guys agree, I mean, at the elementary level, is it similar?
At the elementary level, I can speak to, you know, we have K to five, and, you know, I know we don't like to go back to, to COVID and its impacts, but we definitely see, have seen a significant increase in the needs in our buildings. I think a lot of our incoming elementary students were not, did not have the same exposure to preschool and a lot of that early intervention piece. So coming to kindergarten, it was the first time that they had ever sat in a classroom, that they ever had to learn to take turns and to share and to play with others and interact. So I think the trickle-down effect of that has been pretty significant.
And, and also just to add, I think that NA has a culture of success and doing well, and we really try to break down those barriers, like, you know, not every kid needs to be in honors, not every kid needs an AP course, that we need to find the right course for the right student. They, there's a lot of conversations within the, the student body and the, the community that you have to get goal testing, that you have to look at this. And, and I think we as a district need to keep encouraging our students and finding that, you know, that our strengths, but also making sure every kid is connected and, and lots of different things, not just in those areas, and also helping them understand that there's multiple paths to where they want to be when they grow up. And that's the reason why the, the skills curriculum will be helpful, and that's the reason why all of us partnering for the career readiness index will be helpful, so kids can see their passions at a younger age and keep building on that, on through.
So back to the social media part, like, you know, there's research that's correlating these things, right? Is there any solution, or any thought, you know, piece that's out there to cope with it?
We talk about this all the time. We'd love to be able to reach more of our families and educate them about social media. And we're talking about it in a future community connections, perhaps bringing in a speaker, but it's just getting the families to come. Educating families about the proper use of technology, that it shouldn't be plugged into the kids' bedrooms, that they need to dial back from their technology at an earlier time. You know, it's just that constant images that they're able to see over and over and over again on TikTok that they can't get out of their heads that really can spiral them into anxiety. So it's hard to educate all of the community members, but we're, we're thinking about ways we can do that.
And I think what has helped also, at the high school level, at NAI-Nash, we have started putting the cell phones on the walls before they enter in. That has been a huge help, at least at NAI. Our teachers are very thankful that the kids do not have their cell phones on them nearly as much. So I think the more we can do that and have the kids engage in that manner will also be helpful.
There's not a middle school council represented up there, but the middle schools this year also, for lack of a better word, banned cellphone use during the day. And I think it has actually come as a relief to kids because now they're not allowed. They are allowed as an emergency, can I please text my parent, can I please call my mom? Absolutely. But they need to ask permission to use their phone, and that has made an enormous difference. Another middle school council here in another building.
The teaching is just, I mean, it's there, if it's in their pocket, they're going to go back and check it. Much different than just always having to get like accessible between classes. The engagement's higher with peers as well.
They have lunch, they're not permitted to have them at lunch, so they're communicating with others, they're building new friendships. So that has been a huge positive this year that obviously I think we're going to continue with.
Less disciplinary.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah. They get it.
Right? Because social media is one piece, but there is also just the conversation with us, believing and stuff like that. So taking that out of it really helps a lot. Kids are getting phones too young, they're getting social media too young. And educating parents, as Brian said, it's huge because we don't know what we don't know, right? So doing the research to, to set your kids up in our, in our community up for success and healthy life.
No apologies necessary. Any more questions? Mr. Corona?
Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Being in this role, I have heard from several different students at luncheons and in the Google form that I send out to sign up for luncheons. What resources are available to students when no counselor is available, especially to students who do not have an IEP or 504? If, if a student is having a crisis, and let's say all five of the counselors at Nash or at NAI are in meetings or out of the building or talking to other students, what should that child do?
If they come straight to the office, our school counseling secretaries will, one, really make sure that one of us is found. But if not, you're right, we do have student assistance coordinators. They will be able to intervene and be able to access and come and support. We now have a social worker for those buildings and a variety under, across the district who are also allowed to and able to interact with students. They will also be called during the emergency. Glade Run, the therapist around the building, they are welcome to work and support our students, even if they are not on their caseload. So if there's an emergency, they are also able to step in. So the district has expanded their mental health opportunities for those kids for crisis situations, and we have utilized them to be able to intervene and even bounce ideas off as we go through. But I would say their first initial thing is get to an adult and make sure, whether that's a teacher, an administrator, or another counselor or secretary, they will then connect you with one of those sort of resources.
Ms. Britton Dozier?
Thank you, Mrs. Warner, and thank you for the presentation. I am so happy that our district continues to be concerned and committed to the mental wellness of our students. Many districts do not have the level of resources that we have, and I'm glad that we consistently are working in this area. I do think that Ms. Faber and Mr. Corona's comments are important from a student perspective, but I would also urge our families and parents to understand that we do have really great resources. I personally have experienced them. If you reach out, a lot of things can be done to help families. And I think we need to continue to communicate this to our families and our, our parents and our students, because many, many students don't have these opportunities and have nowhere to go. So thank you for the great work, keep it up. Yes, of course, there are areas that we can improve on, but I appreciate all that you're doing.
Anyone else? I really enjoyed this report. There were so many good things in it. I appreciated the new philosophy, the resource guide, the coffees at all levels. I'm excited to see that develop, looking more at career readiness. I think a lot of people hear school counselor, and they focus on that counselor piece, and they start thinking therapist, but you guys really have a lot more on your plate with those three domains of, you know, the academic piece, the career readiness piece, the social emotional piece. So thank you for working on all those areas. A couple questions, piggybacking on Mr. Weniger, the, the suicide severity scale, that being something you want to implement, I don't think I saw that in the timeline. Is that something we can implement quickly?
Yes, it is free, and we are able to do that. We just need to make sure we have time to train and make sure our social workers and school counselors have access to it. And it is, like I said, it's almost like a universal language. More and more people are using it, and Glade Run, our counselors use it too. So we can do that fairly quickly.
That is great. In the report, you also talked about the burden of non-counseling tasks that you guys have to handle. And from the presentation, it seems like testing is a big part of it. Is there anyone that you'd like to elaborate? Are there other things in addition to the testing piece that take away from your time as being school counselors?
I want to talk sensitively about that. Nobody wants to hear us say, oh, we want to pass off or to, to look at shifting work. But when we look at school counseling, we are a tier-one support. So when we look at MTSS, tier one is for all students. And if there are things that are going to pull us away from being able to be accessible to all those students, then that is, that's really where the issue comes. Testing is one of them. Yes, that is a huge part and a huge component. Goal screening at the elementary level, anything that would delve into tier one or tier three support, student assistant program coordinator at the elementary level to be able to help with that. So there are some additional things, but it's just trying to make sure that when we talk about our three domains, that we are seeing it at the level where we are able to keep accessing those people. And sometimes it does come down to understanding what our workload is. One of our other recommendations is to look at RAMP certification, which is a recognized ASCA model program. And the reason why we want to do that is really data gathering. The, the process really requires each building to gather data on what is going on so we know how to better provide our services to students. So if we were able to do that, we would be able to provide the board with individual building data of like, here's how McKnight looks right now, here how Angamar looks right now, and in order to be able to help align those, our roles with the, the ASCA model. And, and sometimes it does require shifting, and sometimes that does require us also looking at it in a different perspective. So, but yes, there are those things. Testing is, is big, and that was a part of it, but it's, it's not the only thing, is what I'm thinking of, that cover those.
Thank you. I read, I really appreciated how in the appendices of this report, you included your strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats analysis, the internal survey you did. And, you know, I just want to, I was really pleased to see that one of the things that across the board that got mentioned by many people was the student-centered, how student-centered this department is, the compassionate, their commitment to students, that was exciting to see. And also just how much this department really seems to like work as a team and enjoy each other, like this one in particular. "Our department has a wealth of knowledge and expertise. I always know I have someone to call no matter the situation. I also know that I have caring, compassionate professionals who empathize with me during difficult times. I am fortunate to be surrounded by such amazing professionals." And I was so happy to read that. And there are other examples that are very similar of how you all really seem to appreciate the work that you do and the teamwork you have. And so that gives me a lot of hope for this department, that even though clearly you have lots of challenges, that this group is up to tackling them. So that was wonderful news for me. And I also want to mention, Mr. Kiggins, there were also many comments in there about what a great job you were doing and how wonderful a job you do leading this department. So kudos to you, and it was wonderful to see that also. And if there are no other questions, then I think we can move on to our next report. Thanks again.
Next up, we have the speech and language program review, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Freinop.
Yeah.
I don't know if the counselors are being sensitive to our speech.
No, I might be a little, I feel some kind of way about that. Yeah, no. Good evening, everyone. We're here to talk a little bit about the speech and language review today. Our speech and language department is a small but mighty group of individuals that provide wonderful support to our students, not only with special needs, but the students across all facets, elementary, middle, and high school. And one of the things that we're excited to talk about with our program review really is, is just to think about the committee work that we've done. I think as a group of professionals, we've spent the fall and winter really talking about what speech and language support services and resources are, what they look like and sound like, how diverse they are. And speaking about the, the counselors and their role, there really are many roles that our professionals play in many facets of, of the school day, that they play an integral part of, and they're excited to talk to you about that today. This is the entire group. We had the opportunity to talk and really assess and evaluate the effectiveness of the program. We talked about ideas for improvement, but I think one of the things that really we heard throughout the time that we talked is, our wonderful professionals help our students find voice. Some of our students come to us and, and, and lack the ability to communicate in the typical way. And our department and the speech and language program really helps students find that voice, better articulate that voice, and use it to advocate for themselves. So when we really think about our goals and empowering students, I can't think of a group of better people to talk to you a little bit about how they're shifting their work and how they're ensuring that their work really does provide that voice to our students and empower them in that way. So having said that, that's a little bit about how we got here. I'm going to let Jenna talk a little bit about who the kids are that we support.
Hi, I'm Jenna Rosenbauer. I'm the speech language pathologist at Marshall Middle School. So just a background of what we do as speech language pathologists, we have 736 students in the district currently receiving speech and language support, and 247 of those have it as a primary disability category, which means that we're the case managers for those students. And as case managers, we are in charge of coordinating with their whole team to make sure that they are following the IEP and doing what they can to help these students in the classroom as well, and that we're kind of in charge of all of the paperwork for those students. There has been a stable percentage of the number of students, however, we've had a growth in the tier-two supports, which is for our MTSS program, which Cindy will talk about a little bit later on in the presentation. And one of the things that has become more difficult over time is balancing all of our supports and scheduling needs that we have as speech language pathologists. So for example, we do a lot of direct and indirect services, so I kind of feel like we are a combination of a special ed teacher and a school psychologist, because we are doing the direct services of providing supports to students, but we're also doing the indirect services of evaluating students, writing up the reports, scoring the evaluations, doing the standardized assessments to figure out if those students qualify. It takes a lot of our time to do the indirect services that we do, which are the assessments, the evaluations, the observations, we do access billing, because speech and language is considered a health-related service. So our job has a lot of things underneath it. Another key point that we didn't put into the presentation is that in 2008, we had three autistic support and life skills programs, and in 2024, we have 13 across the district. So we've had a explosion of students with complex communication needs who have moved into the district over the last 10 or 15 years that are adding to our caseload and workload numbers. So for students who receive speech and language support, we work with a variety of different areas of speech and language and communication. We have students who have speech impairments, which could be probably what you think of when you think of speech and language support. So a student who perhaps can't say "are" correctly, so they might say like "ca" instead of "car." We have students who might say "cool" instead of "school," they leave off blends. We have students who have fluency disorders such as stuttering. We have students with voice disorders, frog, like froggy voices, to use like a layman's term. We also have students who work on language skills, and this is a big one academically. So students who have trouble with receptive language, they might have difficulty following directions in the classroom or understanding what their teacher is, the information that the teacher is providing to them throughout the school day. We have students with expressive language difficulties who may have trouble getting what they want to say out. This could be verbally or in writing. So we do see it a lot in ELA classes and classes that have heavy writing workloads, and pragmatic language difficulties, which is social communication, conversation, working on conversation skills, interpreting social cues, perspective-taking, social problem-solving. One big area that isn't on here as well is, we have 31 students in the district currently who use alternative and augmentative communication, or AAC, which is, most of them use an iPad or a dedicated device for their communication. So they're using a communication device to speak.
Hi, I'm Cindy. I'm from Marshall Elementary, and we're going to talk a bit about what exactly and how we identify these students. So Jenna talked about the different types of students that we see, but how we identify them is we do universal K, I mean, first grade screeners, and that's district-wide. So every single kid gets a, a quick screening, and then we start a file, and every kid is kept on our file and our list until they make, until they pass into, say that they have all their speech sounds or all their articulation, all their language skills. language skills. Teacher requests are also part of that. We follow well-checked kids as part of the MTSS program. And we also get kids from the PEI program, which is early intervention, or we also get kids that move in from out of the district. So then, once we have our caseload, then we need to determine, okay, does this, does this disability or this thing that's going on with these kids, does it have educational impact? And that's where we make our decision if they get school-based services or not. And so, as Jenna said, that could be like reading, writing, speaking, social impact. And then we also need to determine, when we have such a plethora of languages and rich cultures in our district, we need to decide, is it a difference or is it a disorder? For example, the TH sound is an example we can give you. Some cultures and some languages don't have that sound. So we don't service all kids with TH if that's not part of something that culturally they would normally have. So once we do that, then we move on to, we choose, are they going to qualify? Do we need to move on to a comprehensive evaluation? And on average, each of our SLPs in the district do about 30 full evaluations each year. So if we average that out, that's about one per week. And we also do about 50 to 60 IEPs every year. And so that's about one every three to four days, all without having time in our schedule to do those. Those that we, all of our scheduled time is direct time with kids. So that's all above and beyond what our direct time is with kids. And so, a little bit more about our MTSS program. We have a program in place. It's something we've been working through. That is something, that is one of our goals to firm that up just a little bit more. So we have tier-two interventions right now, where we're pulling kids for less time. Most of the kids in our tier-two program are students that are getting articulation. We have been able to manage that more on the tier with tier-two supports as opposed to moving to a full evaluation. So that does, that has cut down a bit on that paperwork. And then when the students do move to tier-three, they're more like with significant needs related to language. Like we said, our autistic support classrooms typically parents, we find that parents' number-one concern for students in those classrooms is their language skills and growth. And so that's something, and that's where we work very highly with those populations. We have, those students mostly get individual and group sessions to further their skills.
So we looked through the strategic plan and goal one, academic excellence. Our number-one goal is to ensure that all students are having equitable access to the core curriculum, no matter what their communication skills are. So one way that we go about meeting this is we do a lot of adapting as SLPs. So we have knowledge of vocabulary growth and language growth. So we're able to kind of shift what is expected of them in their classrooms to a level that they are able to understand or utilize. So we're using a lot of curricular materials to adapt for our students. We have access to some programs, Boardmaker, SymbolSticks, throughout the district, that we're able to use to make simple supports for students who require visuals. Maybe they aren't able to read, so they use visual supports in their programming place of reading them. We collaborate with teachers to embed the communication goals into the classroom. So we're always working with the teachers to make sure that they know what the students' goals are so that they can help them whenever we're not there. Because if we, if our students only work on speech in the amount of time that they're with us, they're not going to make much progress. Because there's a lot, it's like one, one and a half hours a week for the most part. So they have to work on that everywhere. So we work with teachers and parents to make sure that it's consistent across the board. Cindy mentioned the consistent implementation of the MTSS framework. This is one of our goals, to make this, to kind of shore this up and make sure that all of the SLPs across the district are using the same criteria to qualify students for IEPs and for the tier services, and regularly assess student progress. We report, like all the special education teachers, we report progress reports every quarter that are through the IEPs and that are sent home to parents.
Our next goal aligns with the continuous learning. And the first part there talks about caseload versus workload. So caseload is the sheer number of students that we see. And workload is balancing that. As you can see, an articulation student that we see maybe twice a week for 10 minutes would be a lot less time constrained, or has a lot less time constraint than on a student that we might see multiple times per week. We're programming a device and doing a lot more intensive work. So ASHA, which is the American Speech Language Hearing Association, that's our governing body. We, as speech therapists, all speech therapists in the district have our ASHA certification. So that's a national licensing. We have a state license, and then we also have our state teaching license in addition to that. And so our governing body definitely wants us to go to a workload model. And so we also then, in addition to that, we, with our time, collaborate with teachers who work with each of the students. There's 16 SLPs in our district, and we all work to coordinate and make sure our program is consistent across the district as well. And that time, we have loved this process particularly because it has given us a time to really collaborate and work together as a team. In addition, thank you. We, one of our department goals, like we talked about, is to shore up that MTSS process as we move a little further. We also look to our governing board, ASHA, as guidance, because they do a ton of research for us, so that we can look to them to see what's the most current research and topics of concern, and what's best practices for our field. And in order to maintain that certification, we do additional continuing education specific to maintaining that certification. And I really encourage you guys to take a quick look at ASHA's website and their position statements related to communication needs if you get an extra moment. But that site is readily and publicly available.
Goal three, empowering students. This is a huge one for our department. Sorry. We are always working to advocate for students to find their voice and to use their voice to advocate for their own needs. So like we said, we have a lot of students who use AAC. We always want these students to have their AAC on them. We want that to be something that everybody in the school knows, that that student should always have that with them. Because if they don't have it, then they don't have their voice. And Cindy said to me earlier, she, she was like, I wish we could bring one with us so we could show everybody, but then somebody wouldn't have their voice for the night. So we wouldn't be able to do that. We, when students get like to a higher level of articulation, for example, we work on carryover into the classroom. So we might go observe them in their classroom, see how they're doing with their speech sounds. When students get older and they're a little bit more responsible and receptive, we might do rubrics where they rate themselves. So they're able to have their own ownership over their speech and language goals. Provide opportunities for students to work with peers. We have a lot of robust best buddies programs throughout the district, which are really amazing for our students with complex communication needs. Something that I work in the middle school and I have run into a lot is my students are starting to get cell phones, but have some trouble figuring out how to utilize those with their communication difficulties. So I've had a couple of students whose parents have worked with me to send their cell phones in with their student, despite what we just said about not being able to use cell phones, in school, where we're working on finding texting programs that use symbol support or using voice-to-text from their communication device and getting the algorithm to kind of pick up on that robotic voice in a way that they're able to text their friends so that they can participate like everybody else in their grade. And using technology to bridge and empower, we help get kids set up with voice-to-text, read alouds. Some of the textbooks are able to be read aloud. We have some apps and information on iPad adaptability, which we actually, there was an in-service on that during the last in-service day. So.
Our next goal relates to the facilities for the future. And here, again, we're going to press on with the technology. We use a lot of apps. We might, as simple as an articulation app that helps us to individualize our treatment sessions in a very quick and meaningful way for students. There's language apps that we're using, different types of games. And then, most importantly, again, we go back to the AAC, but it's such a large part of our job, and has become, especially as our classrooms have grown from the three into the 13. And so we have those 30 AAC users. And as SLPs, we're, we're responsible for programming, programming the device, implementing, teaching the other staff members how to utilize that device, and as Jenna said, advocate for each of the students to use their voice. So that's kind of where our technology growth and where we would like to continue with those types of apps and development.
And the last goal, safety and wellness for our students, is to promote inclusivity for all of our students, again, so that students feel supported and welcome. So we have seen kind of a, an uptick in students who are included in the classrooms than in the past. So with that inclusion comes us figuring out a way to make sure that those students are meaningfully included in their classrooms, despite their communication levels. So I work with several students right now who have complex communication needs but are in with their gen ed peers for a lot of their class. So I work with a lot of the teachers in my school to make sure that those students are being involved and that the students are, their peers are communicating with them and they're able to communicate with their peers. One way I do that is to program specific words into their communication devices that have to do with, like, for example, one of my students is, they're reading Lord of the Flies in eighth grade right now. So I just went in and programmed in their page all of the characters' names from Lord of the Flies and the title and the author, so that they can participate in the class discussions with everybody else. We also model the AAC for other students so that their peers are able to understand their communication devices so that they are able to interact with their friends, essentially. We look to expand our access to curricular materials for the PA Career Ready Skills Continuum. Right now, in the secondary level anyway, we have skill streaming. And then several people in the district have access to Everyday Speech, which is a website with a full curriculum of social communication skills. So we utilize those. But we're always looking for more areas where we can have research-based curricular materials for our speech and language sessions. And then assessment tools. We want to make sure that we are using the best and most specific and most up-to-date materials that we can. We just got a load of new tests this year, which is great. We got updated assessments for several of our assessments that we have in the district. And that's been really helpful with pinpointing the specific skills that we need to work on with students.
Thank you, ladies. So in conclusion, you're good. So in conclusion, the strengths, this is a small but very mighty group of people that does a great amount of diverse and amazing work every day. And we think about our areas for improvement. We need some further evaluation for caseloads and workloads. Like Cindy was talking about, that caseload versus workload model is a part of our recommendations and really investigating what that can look like and sound like for service delivery moving forward. Talking about professional development and making sure that, you know, the speech and language component doesn't get left off of the conversation at all three levels of our MTSS process. And then making sure that we're integrating our goals across curriculum. Lastly, we want to make sure that our speech and language pathologists have, there will be supported through that caseload versus workload model, and that we're providing them the flexibility to make sure that that direct service delivery doesn't change and, and, and that it provides that service that is so important moving forward. So that is it for our program review. We thank you for the opportunity. This is the first time a program review for speech and language has ever been completed in the district. So we're very excited and thank you for the opportunity to highlight this small but mighty group of people.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? No? I really appreciated this presentation. I really liked this look about evaluating the caseload versus workload, because it makes a lot of common sense to me that if you're working on articulation with a small group, and this kid goes once a week with six other kids for 20 minutes, that would be a lot different than some of these kids that have more challenging speech problems. And, let's see. And I really appreciated the additional insight into, you're doing things like access building, or access billing and, and, you know, the, all the other stuff on top of working directly with students that you have to do. Because that, from where I sit, that's not something that I, I had, had occurred to me or I thought about. And I just want to add that I had a student who was briefly in the speech program for an articulation issue. To this day, this child denies that they ever could not pronounce their Rs. And I think it is not a coincidence that both of the speech therapists she worked with, one retired while she was their student and one retired shortly after. So I just appreciate all the work you guys do. And I know that you have some challenging students. And, oh, and I will throw in that one of those teachers brought in her, a former homeroom teacher that she had a connection with, because my child was not, did not have a great attitude, and brought in that homeroom teacher who said, come on, kid, get with the program. And, and that really helped. And so I appreciated how that speech teacher thought outside the box and did that collaboration piece that you mentioned several times through your report and in your presentation. And so I know you guys are doing great work, and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you.
And now we will move on to our student activities report. Mr. Corona and Ms. Faber.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. The NAI Spring Play just wrapped up their outstanding performances this past weekend. They had performances for some of the third graders in our district, as well as the senior citizens show on the fifth. The entire cast did an excellent job in executing and performing The Hunchback of Notre Dame. Power of She has been restocking the bathrooms with feminine products all year. They are now working on a plan for Women's History Month and International Women's Day. They are also discussing plans for clothing and cookie sales, highlighting women-owned and run businesses, as well as designing stickers that empower the girls in our school. The Table Tennis Club is gearing up for its annual pizza pong tournament slated for Wednesday, February 26th, after school in the NAI cafeteria. It is open to all North Allegheny students and employees. The tournament features unlimited pizza and beverages and a maximum field of 96 players. Round Robin Play ensures a minimum of seven games per player. It is followed by a traditional single-elimination bracket tournament of the 32 highest finishers from the Round Robin. A good time is expected as in many years past. In February, Speech and Debate will compete at the Three Rivers Invitational, Western Pennsylvania's largest and most prestigious tournament on February, had competed on February 7th through the 8th. In addition, the team will compete at the Mars Invitational to close out the regular season ahead of four straight weekends of qualifier tournaments in February and March, for the state championships in March, the NCFL Grand National Tournament in May, and the NSDA National Championships in June. NA Pickles are planning a pickleball tournament to, to fundraise for UNICEF humanitarian organization. Students are in the early stages of planning how to fundraise during the tournament, advertise, and reserve courts after school. Students also have the opportunity to play pickleball during our new activity periods. Many students can sign up to play as a way to get active during the school day. Staff continues to provide after-school workouts every Tuesday in the cardio lab. A guided plan is scheduled in March to go over wellness opportunities for staffs through UPMC. Staff also has an opportunity to win a Starbucks gift card through the nurse's office when they get a blood pressure check. Staff will also get a ticket for wearing red, had the opportunity to get a ticket on February 7th for National Wear Red Day, to raise awareness for heart disease in women. Project Water is in the process of launching registration for this year's NAI event. Last year, they successfully registered over 500 participants. Students are finalizing the launch video and testing the website for this year's signups. The tentative registration date launch for NAI is the 14th. The date of the dodgeball event at NAI is April 16th. During the next two months, they will focus on registering participants, collecting money and waivers, scheduling, scheduling games, registering and training volunteers, ordering shirts, and communicating with participants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. Well, Julianne's report kind of puts my report to shame. That was an excellent report. Anyways, rehearsals are underway for the Spring Musical, The Children Are Eden, focusing on refining the production's technical aspects. Tickets are now on sale, and the show will run through Wednesday, February 26th to Sunday, March 2nd. NHS members supported, supported elementary and middle school programs and volunteered at home, at the Home Speech and Debate Tournament. In February, service opportunities included tutoring, a robotics competition, bingo night, and volunteering at the Vincentian Home. Members will also assist with the Nash Musical and participate in Facial Hair February to support Highmark's The Caring Place. The North Allegheny Rowing Team attended an indoor competition at the David L. Lawrence Convention Center. Thirty-four athletes competed across various events, achieving 20 personal records and six podium finishes. The team will be hosting a competition at Marshall Middle School on Sunday, Saturday, February 22nd. The team plans to move back onto the water in mid-March. Today, I hosted a principal luncheon where Mr. Mergan also attended. We had a great turnout of students and a very meaningful conversation. In addition to my report this month, there are six items for board consideration. First, First, permission for the North Allegheny PMEA Orchestra to travel to Johnstown PA for the PMEA Western Region Orchestra Festival. Permission for the North Allegheny Varsity Cheerleading Squad to travel to Orlando, Florida for national championships. Waiver of Board Policy 241 for the cheerleading trip. Permission for the North Allegheny Honors Ensemble students to travel to Hartford, Connecticut for a division conference. Permission for North Allegheny DECA students to travel to Orlando, Florida for an international career development conference. And finally, waiver of board policy 241 for the DECA trip. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corona and Ms. Faber. Any questions or comments on that report? Seeing none, we can move on to the finance report. Mr. Weniger.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. This month, there are four items for board action and two information-only items. The actionable items are the collateral securities report, the budget transfers, student expenditures for December of '24, and the accounts payable list. And the information-only items are the 24-25 January forecast and the ending cash balance for January of '25.
Any questions or comments, Mr. Weniger?
No, you know, just the monthly update for budget. We're still tracking roughly about a million dollar surplus, which is still fantastic.
Excellent. Any other questions or comments on this folder? Seeing none, we can move on to the human resources report. Ms. Britton Dozier.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. We have seven voting items in the HR folder this month. These items include resignations and retirements, appointments, wage and status changes, leaves of absence, recognition for additional education, honoraria and club activities, supplement and supplemental contracts.
Do you have any questions or comments?
I do, thank you. We have significant retirements this month in the category of professional employees. We have 19 professional retirements representing 532 collective years of service in our district. And when you add in the two professionals who retired mid-year, we have a total of 21 professionals retiring this school year with 591 collective years of service in our district. Also this month, we will vote on the retirement of three paraprofessionals with 47 years of collective service. And I thank Ms. Tracy for helping me calculate, or actually calculating for me, all these numbers. Many of these professionals have in excess of 20 years working with our students in our district. And I know that our students have directly benefited from having these professionals during their academic career. For example, my son and niece both had the pleasure of learning from Coach Margot Hinton during their extracurricular experiences. And she's been with our district for 33 years and will be greatly missed. Further, in our facilities department, Edward Frobe, a lead custodian, is retiring after 25 years of service at North Allegheny. So a very big thank you to all of the retirees and employees leaving our district. We so appreciate their work and efforts on behalf of our students and community.
Thank you, Ms. Britton Dozier. Anyone else? Mr. Corona.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. I'd like to echo the congratulations to all these individuals. One in particular I did want to shout out was Ms. Christine Megan from NAI. We all have that teacher who, you know, really stood out to us and, you know, was more than a teacher and more, you know, as a mentor and someone you can go to. And that was my teacher. And so I'm really thankful for her service to North Allegheny, 24 years. That's amazing. Yeah, I just wanted to thank her.
Thank you, Mr. Corona. Anyone else? Okay. Now we can move on to our property and supplies report. Mr. McClure.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. We have three items for consideration next week, the first being the approval of the purchase of three X mark laser X 60-inch lawnmowers. The second being approval of purchase of 11 pieces of weight room equipment. And the third, the approval of the purchase of a steel green custom spreader slash sprayer.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Any additional information on those?
Oh, absolutely. We, it seems that we're buying a lot of lawnmower equipment. And that comment came up a couple of months ago, say, hey, and, and what we've learned and thanks to some supplemental information that we shared with the board in our capsule last week, that's, that's not part of the agenda here. We learned a lot about how this equipment ages out. The three pieces of equipment that are being replaced by the X marks are all units purchased in 2019, so they're not terribly old. However, we've been provided a pretty handy comparison of what, of how this equipment ages. And, and, you know, it goes on hours of use rather than miles because there's not an odometer on them. However, we've got a average of about 100 and, about 120,000 miles, in air quotes, on each of these old equipment. And also, I'm glad to see that we have places to put these. It isn't like we are worried about storage. And we're also keeping the old equipment and as backups so that we aren't in the situation that we're in currently right now where if a piece of equipment is down, we don't necessarily have something to fill in very efficiently. So, so there's, there's some positives there. The weight room equipment is something that was in the budget and I'm told it is needed. I believe that's for NAI. And then the, the spreader and sprayer, that's kind of neat. It's, you know, it's a little bit of a, like, wow, that's a lot of money for, for what it is. It's 20, 27,000 dollars, as I recall. Yeah, 23,845. What's neat about that, and this is all towards our overall goal of improving appearances, but what's neat, we've got a budget line item for $100,000 for that overall goal in this year's budget. This represents, you know, almost a quarter of that. But what's not shown is this is taking the place of outsourced fertilizing. So we're actually going to be saving money on that side that doesn't reflect here in this capital portion. So, so that's, that's pretty neat. And that'll, that'll allow us to control that better and have a better end product.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Any other questions or comments on this folder? Seeing none, we can move on to the technology report. Dr. Simcoviac.
There is one item in the technology services folder and that has to do with the management service contract memo with Toshiba. Yes, I'll use the mic. I just wanted to comment that Mr. Cox has taken the same approach with this item that he has with multiple other technology voting items over the last couple of years. That is, first, identify North Allegheny's specific needs. Second, to involve stakeholders, including educators, technology professionals and even the technology advisory committee. And third, to negotiate the most favorable contract to support North Allegheny's needs. So I wanted to express my appreciation for the process that he uses in order to negotiate these contracts. And he has done very well for the district with respect to the cost of the contract.
Thank you, Dr. Simcoviac. Any other questions or comments on this item? I would like to echo Dr. Simcoviac's comments. I applaud Mr. Cox for his hard work on, on all the voting items that end up in this report, but especially on this Toshiba one this month. Next, we move on to our school board report. Mrs. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. We have one item next week, candidate for the Allegheny Intermediate Unit Board of Directors. It's been a long time since North Allegheny has had a person on the AIU board. And considering the amount of services that we have there, it would be great if we were able to have a board member there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Blackburn. Any comments on this item? I appreciate your interest in the position. Now we can move on to the student services report. Dr. Gibbs.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. There are three items for action this month in the student services report. First is the Watson Institute Education Center Agreement. The second is a student placement at St. Stevens Lutheran Academy for Education Services. And the third is the AB Staffing Solutions Agreement.
Any comments on these items, Dr. Gibbs?
No, no comment.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we can move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Highland.
Thank you, Mrs. Warner. We have three items for board consideration at our voting meeting. The first is a second read of Policy 110. The second is a second read of Policy 127. And the third is our professional seminars and professional development report. We also have a few items that are information only. That would be Policy 111, Policy 115, Policy 117, Policy 125 and Policy 147 for retirement.
Thank you, Dr. Highland. Any questions or comments on these items? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to our speakers on non-voting items. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for up to two minutes on any topic?
Good evening. John Harrison, 1473, Head WIG, McCandless. Let's see. This weekend, Girls Wrestling has their Whippy Old Playoffs at Nash. If you have time, come out and support the team. It's a lot of fun. They've worked your butts off all year and hopefully we bring home some, some placements this year. In being part of that, in sitting around talking, listening to the kids talk, I have a concern, and it's not only a concern for this district, but for other districts. And it comes with kids that have IEPs and how we address those with teachers, with counselors and support these kids. It's come to my attention that it seems to be an issue across the district, but more so in the middle, in the high schools, NAI and Nash. I had a daughter that graduated several years ago who had an IEP. And unless you stayed on top of it, teachers took advantage of it. That's, that's not ideal for the, for the students because the students are already at a disadvantage and now they're fighting to go and get that extra help. So I think we need to bring that to the teacher's attention and the counselor's attention. And it's really a shame that the counselors left because I really would, would have liked them to hear this. But it needs to be brought to their attention that these kids need that support. And if it means that in their IEP that they have a lesson planned for that class, unfortunately for that teacher, they have to do that. It's a contract. If not, it can get into ugly things and we just don't want to go there. The other thing that is, is these kids need study guides because the way they learn is different than other students. And we're doing a disadvantage for those kids. So I think we need to really reach out to these counselors, these teachers, and put them on notice that people are paying attention. And unfortunately, there are people that are in this district that won't come out and speak up. They're quiet, they're shy, they may, English may not be their first language. And because of that, it's, those kids are at a disadvantage. So I think we need to really look at how we look at that stuff. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Does anyone on the board have any closing items or any announcements or reminders? All right. Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.